Welcome to the December 17th Planning Board meeting. We are out, all of us, except for Carl here on a cold, dark night. Three days from the solstice, right? And then we start heading into spring. So on the agenda today, we've got review minutes from December 3rd. We have a Form A update on the Affordable Homes Act. And Liz says she has nothing to report, but I might ask you a question. So why don't we start with the minutes? Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yes, I would just change where you said somebody could get $50,000. I would say up to $50,000 because it's not a guarantee they'll get 50.
Oh, okay. Okay, so with that change included, I make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Next up, we have Pat McCulkin here to present a Form A for Larry Walk Road. Would you like to present?
Sure, my name is Pat McCulkin. I'm the land surveyor representing John Karon, who owns property at 8 Larry Walk Crossroads. It's right at the intersection, Larry, and also 18. I was here not that long ago with a form over. The first one here will be for recent appeals. So he tried to market it the way that we configured it last time. So what is, if there is a large garage, looks like a house.
Like a barn, like.
The barn.
Like a barn.
Yeah.
Two stories, it's, it's pretty substantial. So what he would like to do is cut that away from the existing house. Okay? And then he's going to add this lot one to the existing house lot four to make one lot. And he's going to take this building on lot five and add it to lot two. Okay? So this is one on this. Yeah, right. These two together and these two put together. He's going to try and market it as a separate house. He's going to have to get a special permit to make that into a house. Okay?
Are these, I don't want to jump ahead of the game here, but this property line doesn't exist right now, right?
Right, it's going to, but it needs someone.
Does that setback?
Yes, it meets all.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, all the other setbacks were already exist.
Yeah.
This is the new.
That's a new one, yeah.
So that one, we made sure we meet the set, side setbacks, that sort of.
Is this a driveway?
Well, that's. Yeah, it's not going to be used anymore, the driveway. It even says they're not, they're not going to share it. There's going to be a driveway coming up. Which you did previously get a curb cut for. It's, I think, lapsed. I don't know if he actually put it in, but the, the, the building inspector or the highway department gave him a curb cut not that long ago.
Yeah.
To do that.
Oh.
So coming in here.
And you've got the required frontage for, for these?
Yeah, we're actually making it better. Because this one only had seven feet. Now it's got more than enough, and this one has more than enough.
And this, this doesn't meet the?
It still doesn't meet the area requirement, but it's better than what it was.
I firstly, yeah, for me, it's not conforming by an inch, it's not conforming by a mile. Right, if you start with one non-conforming, you end with one non, well, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
But if you make something non-conforming, it's something different.
So, okay. So the frontage is here, so basically that's what we're looking at here as part of the Form A.
Yeah, and I'm not going to say it's going to go this way either. You could go back to the other plan where it's, somebody wants to buy this whole piece as it is. It could happen.
So the other plan was never submitted to the registry of deeds?
No.
Yeah.
It's not. Oh, he's waiting for a buyer before he does that. Yeah, same with this one, too.
Okay.
All he wants to do is make sure, okay, I'm looking for a buyer, I'd like to have something real and I need to show them.
Okay.
Got you.
This is more a house for sale?
Yeah. Yeah, that actually makes it look better, for sure.
Yeah.
I don't see anything here that's.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Form A as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you want us to sign?
Yeah, I think you only need three copies to plug in half. Need four? I, I think, I think I sent one in. Okay, yeah. Okay. I think the property should be just. I'll ask this.
We've come around and signed it and we're supposed to.
Basically, I'm giving this one.
Are you signing it?
No, this isn't at all.
That's somewhere where we can all.
Right.
Yeah, well.
You follow this team. I think it's going to be signed all over.
Right.
Okay. I wonder how long it's been off for. Okay, so we're back on the air and we are, I'm sorry, I have to repeat what I just did. We're doing an update on the Affordable Homes Act and the regulations are out. The state has issued the regulations and Mike and Donna are going to, to work on updating our bylaws. So that we are, you know, leading the, yeah, I just spoke with Michael yesterday and he said they'll start in on that. So, yep, so that's that. Any questions about that? There's also a open comment period that starts December 30th. So if you wanted to submit your comments, again, go on the state website and you can fire away.
How far off are we with what we have now? I haven't taken the time to really jump into it, but.
With our current bylaws, zoning bylaws, Michael didn't think it was going to be that big a deal. Yeah, so, you know, I'll stay, we'll, we'll, I'll stay in touch with him on it. And if there's any changes, I'll let you know and, you know, we'll take it from there.
They're still shooting for February 1?
That's it, February 2nd, yeah. Yep. And apparently there was a, a meeting today, planners and lawyers with someone at the state level. And I gather they got an earful on the whole rollout and how that's, um, how's that, how that's been handled. So.
Early.
Very.
It feels rushed.
Definitely.
So that is that and Liz, you say no, no update, right? One thing, right, okay, one thing I want to know is the diagnostic report that we talked about at the last meeting, it is posted on the website under Planning Board. So, yeah, it's there. So if you wanted to take a look at that, it's there, okay? And did you have a question, you want to come on up?
I, I just wanted to ask if the planning board had a, you know, it's my understanding that the state law always comes to local law, so.
Can you come on up to people? Thank you.
And, and my question is, yeah, so aligning the bylaws is one thing, but it's more just so that people aren't confused.
Can you just introduce yourself? I know.
I'm Patrick White. I'm more.
Okay, thank you.
And the question I have for the planning board around ADUs specifically is whether or not, as you modify the bylaw, you plan to, for example, limit the ability for people to Airbnb two homes on, or two, two units on one property at a time. Where that might have a, a, a negative impact both on the quality life for all residents, whether seasonal or full-time. I think that the question for Michael and, and Donna is going to be, do we want to put some controls in place so that the properties don't become more attractive for investors? Because now that you have two cash flows, the property, you can make more, you know, to carry the mortgage on the property.
I thought the state one spelled that out, that that was not going to be allowed.
No, they didn't. They set us up to each town.
So previously, I don't know if any of you remember, Gary, you would remember, you were on it, when we had the zoning review committee. At that time, the short-term rentals were coming in. And Don Chabon, who was on the select board at that time, asked us to think about short-term rentals. And when I spoke with Ray Miaris at that time, his comment was, well, it's, it's in the general bylaws. It's not a zoning bylaw. So, you know, his comment was, is this really a planning board thing? Or is it a select board thing? Now, I think it's, it's, let me just finish. You know, I think it's something that we can certainly talk about at the planning board level. But I think it's also something that you could talk about at the select board level as well.
Well, no, I think that's true, but I, but specific to ADUs, what you want to have in place, in my opinion, is a limit that says if you put an ADU in, you can't rent both the house and the ADU as a short-term rental. And that is absolutely a zoning bylaw, you know?
Okay, okay, but there's, I mean, do you see that there's a component?
I do.
The general bylaw as well?
I do, and I also think that, like, you know, I mean, from the, whether it's the master plan or policy like this, I think that that's the purpose of this board, is to kind of try to think through and, I mean, I don't know, it's up to you guys, but, you know, I mean, I think this is a really good, you know, you're probably the most, one of the most qualified people I know in town to think this through. Come on.
What did you, what did you mean when you said the, it's in the general bylaws?
So the current, the short-term rental bylaw, which I, I didn't really totally follow what Patrick was saying. The short-term rental bylaw is in the general bylaws. And that's where we have things like, give me a second to get there.
Find it in a better person.
Things like, you know, wetlands protection, licensing public amusements, trash disposal, junk cars, beach regulations, earth removal, I love it. It's, you know, it's, to, to my read, it's often a little less complicated than the zoning bylaws. But, and that's where the short-term rentals fall is on, see if I can find it, on page 67. I guess that was the last new bylaw introduced to the general. So, you know, so when you look at your bylaws, Wayne, it's, we don't normally work with that section, but it's the first section.
Okay.
Okay, and so that's what I thought that Patrick was referencing. So, so it sounds to me like potentially something goes in that section as well as the ADU section. And that's definitely something that we can talk about. We can talk about it right now, if you all want to. If you want to think about it a little bit, that's fine, too. Or we can talk about it and then think about it. Okay?
There's a family on Goodrich Street that actually rents out a place above their garage and is how they afford their mortgage. I'm not saying short-term rentals are bad. I just like to see them as a way to improve affordability, rather than, you know, have it be a situation where there's even more incentive to buy. You know, the Airbnb types don't buy the $5 million houses and rent them. They buy the four, $500,000 house and they put IKEA furniture in and a good photographer. And those are the ones where if you have two rental, you know, kind of incomes, that it becomes like one less house that can be afforded. The other thing that I would consider weighing in on, though obviously it's between the accessory select board and you guys, is to consider what Eremont just did, which is that if, yeah, Eremont was like, well, we're not going to ever have the money to like build lots and lots of affordable homes, affordable homes in terms of like affordability and affordable housing. So what they did is they, they put a, there's some part of state law that says for either the ADU portion of a home or the entire home, if you rent it within an affordable rate, you can waive the taxes on that property. And so it's a way to incentivize kind of keeping rentals affordable rather than as, as short-term rentals at a relatively low cost to the town compared to actually building lots more units. So I think those are like two kind of things that have been put out there lately that, that the town could consider, you know, and I, I mean.
The important thing is that it's sort of that missing middle market that is attractive to outside investors looking at, you know, snapping up properties for short-term rentals. And that's the market that, you know, potentially you could bring in, you know, a new dentist or doctor to the area, something like that. So, um, so, you know, what are your, what do you all think about that?
Short-term rental, it's not like a two-month thing. It would be more like six months or a year, correct?
It's more than.
Thirty days or less.
No, it's 30 days or less. Yeah.
Can regulate for, for no less than a one-year rental, though, a year-round rental. Yeah, that's one of the things that's in the Affordable Homes Act. So that, that kind of takes out the, um, the, uh, the sort of three-month summer rental option in terms of like, you know, you kind of just don't want to have two, you know, a lot of people can make more in three months and they'll make renting for the whole year, you know, and.
So we would take that away?
Wouldn't necessarily. I, I think that it's, it's not about taking away for the whole property, just recognizing that, you know, whether you're, you know, if you, if, you couldn't rent both houses at the same time. That's what we would take away, potentially.
I mean, that's only if there is two.
That's right, that's, that's related to ADU by right.
So, so, so.
Are you interested in?
I'd be happy to.
Are you interested, no, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, sorry.
That we have a volunteer.
Yes. Are you interested in addressing short-term rentals such that they're, they're for residents only?
I put forth a short-term rental bylaw that did that, and then I put forth an ADU bylaw that did that. You know that I ran into a freight train of you're a discriminator in terms of response from some corners. I, I think that we should use, use the, the bylaws to create the incentives for where our folks are the most stressed, you know?
So why don't you work on the short-term rental and the general bylaws and we will work on the?
Well, we need the policy first before we write them. I think when, as a group, we should be talking about.
Well, we're, that's what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I mean, like, that's, I don't want to be like.
So if you're saying that you agree with the idea of addressing the short-term rental bylaw and the general bylaws and making the rest, the requirement that, you know, that you're residential, that's something that you could certainly work on at the select board level.
Yeah, I think that the, the threat to the, I say threat, the, the challenge of town right now, I think, is around the financial attractiveness of having two high val, high, high-dollar rentals on one parcel. And I think that a simple thing you could do is to, in the, to protect the town in the short term without mucking it up with all the kind of things that are divisive in this town would be to, to, to do, there's a couple of things you could do. You could require if there are two rentals on a property that they get in a, a bed and breakfast license, which is in our bylaws, a bed and breakfast is, so if you have, if you rent two, three, four, if you're like Diane and you rent five units, you have to have a special type of commercial bed and breakfast license to do that. That all, that also puts you at a higher level of oversight in terms of the fire department and all the other things. For people who have two, two units, two living spaces in one property, we could, we could make by right their ability to only rent one out at a time. I think you do that through the ADU bylaw that you're, that you're editing. The rest of it, I think, is, is not anything that, you know.
I thought we had that the owner had to live in one of them.
No.
Hmm, not yet.
That's what I thought, too.
No. And that's why we had that problem on Hawthorne Street, you know, Hawthorne Road, you know, that guy sold now, but, you know, where we had the guy who was flooding the rules with, he was renting out to 10 or 15 people at a time and, you know. Yeah. I mean, the larger question of whether we should have short-term rentals is a legitimate question. You know, I took a much harder line than how my colleagues done that one, but, but.
I'm sorry?
The larger question of whether short-term rentals should be allowed in all instances is something that, yeah, we, the bylaw we have now is relatively permissive to short-term rentals and frankly, the oversight at Town Hall is.
But what I'm hearing from you is that you're not interested in, in closing the loophole in the short-term rental bylaw?
I think that I'm interested in what was on the agenda, which was the ADU, question of ADUs and making sure that you can't rent both the main house and the ADU as a short-term.
What's on the agenda is short-term update summary Affordable Homes Act impacts to short-term rentals and ADUs.
Yeah.
So we can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was addressing the ADU side.
I realize that.
What you were saying is that, that you're, you have a more jaundiced view of ADUs in general. Not ADUs, on Airbnbs in general.
I mean, I think you look at places like Goodrich Street where now half the houses.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, I'm saying the feedback we've gotten from a lot of residents is that when there's, when there's.
Well, I don't know, I thought ADUs were something that you came before us last year with an ADU bylaw. I thought this was something that you were supporting.
Okay, just, yeah. You know, I, I, I think that there's, there, that an ADU, if the owner is there, whether they're here two months a year, 12 months a year, is actually helpful for affordability. I think that's a good thing, you know, and, and I think that we've got situations like that. You know, we had a middle school teacher living on Church Street in a tiny house who, who basically got, um, not her, her, uh, her, you know, she was a single mom and, uh, got her, her lease not renewed because the owner died. And we ended up losing that kid in the town. She ended up getting temporary housing in court. But, you know, I think that having strategies that keep sort of the people who work in the community here is, is a good thing. So I'm not against ADUs. I'm just more against the idea that someone, you know, there's all these giant REIT companies now that'll come in and they'll buy 25, 20, 50, 100 houses in an area and try to maximize revenue from them.
I misspoke. You're, 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 you're against short-term rentals, which I, which I.
Not if it's, not if it's the owners there.
To be Airbnbs.
Not if the owner's there.
Okay.
All right, so can we just focus on that idea? So how does the board feel about short-term rentals and a bylaw that requires ownership on site? I mean, how do you feel? Do, you know, do you agree with that?
I do.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good.
That's good.
It's good for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I also agree with the idea that you can't have multiple short-term rentals on one property. In other words, you're required at that point to, any more than one, you're required to have the commercial license for a bed and breakfast.
I'm sorry, so Eric, ADUs with just one used for?
Well, I'm confused because ADU and short-term rental aren't the same thing.
No, they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm all in favor of ADUs. But those are, those are, at the state level, those are fairly well-defined.
Yeah, but we can regulate whether they're used as short-term rentals or not.
Okay, okay, and from my view, I thought an ADU had to be used as an ADU.
ADU is, is just, it's, it's a limitation on size. So it's, the diners, if you're smaller.
Yeah.
And it's basically a second, it can be in the house, it can be above the garage, it can be a separate unit. They're now by right. So the question is rather.
So that has no regulation onto what the space is used for, it's just the space itself. And so it could be used as a, a affordable place for a schoolteacher or whoever to live.
Or it could be high-end.
Or it could be an Airbnb being rented out by the week or day or whatever.
So, and currently you can, um, for, with the ADUs, there's no residential requirement. And I agree with that because you could certainly have somebody putting in an ADU who isn't here in town, but who is still renting it out. That's still very possible. So to me that.
The other house on the property shouldn't be, the main house on the property, let's put it that way, who is, even if it's owned by someone who lives in New York City, it can't be used as another rental ADU.
That's what we want to ban.
Yeah.
That's what I want to ban.
Yeah, that's, that's how I think, but we're, that's, is that where we're going here, yeah?
Unless it follows bed and breakfast rules, right?
So two ADUs.
I think it's, yeah, two.
So two ADUs.
Two, two.
Buildings.
Well, no, it's like, yeah, two dwellings, two dwellings on a property. Can't both be around at one time.
So if you've got two ADUs, you're suggesting that just one could be used?
Missing it.
The main, there's the primary resident, there's a primary, you know, dwelling in the accessory dwelling.
Right.
Can't use both as a, as a short-term rental property.
Okay.
For a non, non-ADU property. Now, the second question will be, do you want to require the resident to be present when the ADU is being rented out? That's kind of one of the things that protects the neighborhood, isn't it?
Right, we should.
But, but if.
Why, why is that necessary if, I mean, you have somebody who lives, you know, wherever and they want to rent it out as an ADU? Why do they have to be there?
Well, also, even though it's not the owner, if it's not a short-term rental, why do we care if it's the owner or not? Because if you're going to use one and you're allowed to do short-term, but the, the other one you can't, who, why do we care if it's the owner or not the owner?
When people are, are present and there's something going on in their, in their ADU or in their main house, that is more, less likely to get out of control than if they're not present.
But that's going to take.
That's, I've asked. I'm asking a question.
That's going to take a potential rental property. You know, if the owner is a person from New York.
And he wants to lease his house.
He wants to lease his house or rent his house long-term, why is that a problem?
Maybe it shouldn't be a problem if you can, if you can define long-term rather than I want to rent it out for three months and we're doing this, but maybe you say it's a year lease.
Yeah, or year lease. You've got no regulation on that. That's like by right.
Is that discriminating against second homeowners?
That's what, that's why I bring it up is it may be perceived that way. If you're requiring people to be there to rent the other unit out, some people are going to, you know.
I don't think we need to have it be the owner if we're going to limit what they can do with it.
I mean, if, to Liz's point, the long-term is just, well, you're in the realty business, so you would know. Long-term, my guess is that less likely to be sort of the party animal crap?
Long, well.
That's what we need.
I think that's, but I think we're getting into an area there where that's pure speculation too.
I'm sorry?
If you get to where you're going to allow one use or not, then you take your chances on hopefully you have a good vetting or whatever, but.
Hopefully the person who owns that house is vetting well because it's their house, it's going.
I think it would be a tough nut to try to require that the owner be onsite.
I don't think.
Basically at all times when the other unit's being rented.
But you could ask if they have a caretaker.
Or, you know, or, you know, you need a property manager now in the, in the short-term rental bylaw area.
Why would you want a property manager on a single-family home?
You don't have it on, somebody that you call.
Yeah, if there's a problem with the short-term rental, the town bylaw already requires tend to have a phone number on file that you can call.
Right.
Okay.
Now they don't have to live there.
Okay.
And I think the other question was, you know, the, the Egremont adopted the, if it's an annual lease that is, let's say like, for example, in Stockbridge at the, the ADU costs a quarter million to put in and that increased the assessment, here is an assessor, he will, I'm not talking about. Increase the assessment by a quarter million. All right. At seven bucks a thousand, that's roughly $2,000 in taxes on that unit. We can, the sale law allows us if we want to waive that 2,000 if the unit is rented year-round at a price that somebody like that teachers aid could afford. So is that something that we want to get behind? If so?
It'd be interesting to see how Egremont, it'd be interesting to see the details of that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
And what threshold, what threshold is affordable?
Yeah, it's applying by state law.
And it might be good to, when did Egremont implement this?
They literally just passed it through town meeting, their special town meeting.
Yeah, like a month ago.
So it might be good to see how it goes.
Yeah.
See how it plays out.
And I'm just saying it kind of, it's, it, it offside, it creates a little bit of an incentive to, you know, just have a year-round renter in there. You know, the, the cutoff in rent is set for, I think for for a two-person is around 1,200 bucks a month. So, you know, if it's a, if it's a one-bedroom, you know, ADU.
That's what defines.
That's what would give you the break on your taxes if we were past that here like Egremont did.
I'm sorry, say again.
So, so let's say it's a one-bedroom ADU, then they can rent it up to $1,200 and get the break. If they were to do two tiny bedrooms and a nine-inch square feet, which is possible on ADU, then, then they can run up to 1,500 and get the tax break that Egremont did.
And that, that ceiling would have to change.
It has to do with the number of bedrooms. It's all based on.
I mean, year to year as, 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 you know, inflation changes and all that.
Yeah, but that's all set by the state. So basically, yeah, the amounts of the, the amounts of the.
And how is it all enforced?
It's, I think that somebody would have to come into the assessors and ask for a break, just like they do with anything else. I think we're talking about a handful of units. You know, basically if you pass this, then there might be five of them a year. And they come in and say, yeah, here's the documentation. I rented it for 1,100 bucks and so therefore give me my tax break.
But when you talk about the state mandating the, the rate of affordability, is it 80% of the mean?
Yeah, it's called the, it's called the, yeah, the, the, it's the.
And that falls at the 1,200? I'm surprised it's that low.
The studios are like nine or 950, one, one bedrooms are 1,200, two bedrooms are 1,500, I think it is. And for an ADU, you're not going to get anything beyond that. But that's a law that would also apply to main houses too. If someone wanted to rent the house out and want to rent out a four-bedroom house, maybe they could rent it out for up to 2,000 a month or something. But it's all based on the area meeting family.
And they had enough interest where they thought they wanted to do that?
Yeah, I thought it was smart on their part because they were like, you know, we're a tiny town. We're not going to spend millions of dollars building housing where a stick build is five, 600,000 bucks to build a small house. If for $2,000, you can basically buy a rental that is now affordable, it's a much cheaper way to get some of those municipal workers and others in your community that, than building a, a brand-new house from scratch. It's just way cheaper on the town.
And it doesn't change the character of the town either.
That's right.
I'd be interested, yeah, like Eric, I'd like to see the details and I'd also want to.
And Lennox just, theirs too, they just passed theirs.
Their ADU bylaw, yeah, yeah.
Which is what, Gary?
They just, well, there's, they didn't really have as much as we had and they just flushed theirs out. It was in the Eagle less 10 days ago or so.
Yeah, they're, they're, they had a special town meeting on December 5th. So, but they were scheduled to have it anyway, so.
And, and theirs said, did they, did they do?
Do the same thing?
Well, they, I think what they did is they had to change some of the stuff they had to meet the state, one thing.
They were just meeting the current, you know, Affordable Homes Act law requirements. So they were updating what they already had on the books to meet.
What the state said.
Yep.
But it didn't have any inclusion of not doing two or?
I, I don't know about that. I'm not sure about that.
All right. So in terms of, it sounds to me like there's consensus here on short-term rentals, which is in general bylaws requiring, requiring owner onsite?
No, not.
No, just not having both rented at the same time.
No, I'm talking about requiring, requiring that the short-term rental be a full-time resident?
No.
No consensus there?
Oh.
Okay.
Think what I would like to see is that no two can be rented at the same time.
Right.
Okay.
It really covers what we were trying to accomplish. And if another person goes into the other unit, but it's long-term, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But what about short-term rentals that, you know, where it's not, it's just a single property and addressing the loophole there whereby, you know, investors are coming in buying certain.
Say that again. Say that again.
So in the general bylaws, the short-term rental bylaw, there's a loophole whereby investors can come in and purchase sort of the missing middle properties and rent them out as short-term rentals. And that's taking that missing middle market off the market for people who might be, you know.
So whether it's one of those companies or it's a, a second homeowner, what's the difference in that? Because if a second homeowner has a property, you're saying that they wouldn't be able to rent that or use that as a, because whether it's a company or an individual, those rules are going to apply.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, it's saying that if you're a second homeowner, you can't use your property as a short-term rental. And it's opening up, you know, properties that come on the market.
I don't, I don't think I like that limitation.
What about the rest of you?
I don't think that's fair to.
I, I'm, I'm not understanding this, I guess.
I know.
I mean, my, my neighbor, it's a big house and he, he, you know, rents it out by the week or whatever when he's not around. He lives in England. There's, I don't, I didn't think there was a regulation against that.
There isn't, there isn't. The problem is, is that, you know, a lot of the properties that are being purchased by outside investors that's removing, you know, there's certain.
It's hard to differentiate between a second homeowner and a, and a, and a corporate entity that's buying of properties. I don't know how you do that.
It's been the whole problem in the last several years when we had this discussion.
Yeah. I, I, it's kind of like immigration. I don't know how you stop that.
I mean, one of the things that we did put in the short-term rental bylaw is that, is that, is that we banned certain kinds of corporate entities from being in the short-term rental market in Stockbridge. That actually likely helped us in terms of having people come in and buy at scale here. We, there's also been talk about taking out the carve-out, which we had, which is a certain kind of, it's a chapter S corp, I think it is. One of them, we kind of carved, carved out, yeah.
I mean, I just don't really understand if you're serious about affordable housing, why you wouldn't be looking at this at the Affordable Housing Trust Committee and talking about this. And, you know, I sensed resistance there in terms of the housing plan to, you know, including addressing this. And for me, I just, I don't, I don't.
For the reasons, for the reasons we just said, I, I could see where there'd be a reason to maybe think about not having that in place because I think it puts people, why should they be restricted from renting their house? I, I don't, I, I get the two. I, I like that idea. But I don't, I don't want to restrict people from their right to rent their house out.
And I think that the big giant change right now is a state law that allows ADUs by right. And just even around this table, you can see there's consensus around the two rentals on one property, two short-term rentals on one property thing. And that deals with a lot of, I think, buy-in from the town at, at the vote. That issue, everyone's going to understand, and I think that we'll have consensus around. As soon as we start layering on top of it, the more controversial stuff that, it's absolutely appropriate to have that conversation and let the town vote on it. But I would keep that separate from the one specific issue that we're trying to solve right now, which is this big change. You just have an ADU bylaw that was a special permit and now is by right. You know, whether or not you guys update the ADU bylaw or not, it is by right as of February 1st.
Well, certainly for those in town who have water and septic, but for everybody else, it's very difficult to do.
Yeah.
Which they didn't really think about in Boston.
Well, there's also, you know, there's no local control, so. Stockbridge was, but this is what you guys were, you know, advocating for, so I'm a little surprised.
Were you, were you, it was us guys? So what were you advocating?
Affordable Housing Trust Committee.
Advocating for what?
Affordable homes.
ADUs.
Our, our, our primary goal is affordable homes. I don't think our primary goal is ADUs. I think that's taking it and putting it into one big pot there. It's, it's something to consider certainly, and it's something that we have to deal with because it's here.
Let's also bear in mind that Lennox and Great Barrier both have, have had very, very, have had bylaws that are consistent with the new state law for years now. And they put in, I think in Lennox, the last five years, they're like eight or 10 ADUs and Great Barrier was like six. I mean, you know, they're expensive to put in. They're, you know, a nice nine-inch square feet. You're talking about a quarter million bucks if you, if you do it modular. Not, it's not like we're going to see a big giant run on these. I just don't want to see.
What about, what about the, the state designation as a, what's the name of the designation?
Summer.
Seasonal.
Seasonal communities.
Oh, yeah.
I understand that was something you were advocating for and tiny homes and so on.
Look at that.
So how is that, you know, how is that, I mean, that's certainly, I mean, Stockbridge has been clear, everyone. Just a reminder, just one second please. Stockbridge has been designated a seasonal community, but the town has to accept a town meeting that designation. So, and I'm not sure the article in the Eagle actually covered that.
Yeah, they didn't mention that.
They didn't mention that. That's important.
That'll be details.
I know. So I guess, you know, it.
So the seasonal designation gives us what? What options?
Tiny homes, tiny homes all over town.
Okay.
Because they can be built.
There's only one path to preference municipal and district, school district workers. There's only one path to do that in affordable housing. You want to, you want to preference people like, you know, at the highway department or a teacher's aid, like I was just talking about. The only way to do that is accept that seasonal community designation. You guys can write as restrictive a tiny home bylaw. I couldn't give a crap about tiny homes. All right. You make sure that the frontage requirement is as big as it is for a regular house and all the rest of it. And you'll protect the town from an onslaught of tiny homes. The thing I've wanted to do for five years around affordable housing has to do with keeping the John Biaco's and the Jack Spencer's and the Ivies and all the other people who have worked for this town and lived in this town, able to stay in this town. You know, we loaned, we, believe it or not, we loaned Hugh out to Egremont for a quick conversation on how to, how to pave sidewalks the other day. And, and Lucinda, the chair of the SLAB board down there, and Mary McGurn, who was tasked with this project, said, oh my God, we wish we had a Hugh. And the reason we have people like Hugh who are so awesome so often is because they're locals right here, living in the community. I want, I don't want to give that up as the average home here costs $800,000. So as far as I'm concerned, our affordable housing strategy is not about solving the world's problems. You know, let the rest of the world do that. I want to solve the problem of, of municipal and teacher and district employees being able to afford to live in these communities. And the way we do that is the seasonal designation specifically carves out. It gives a preference above all the other preferences for municipal workers. And the only way we get that is if we accept this. So I would encourage you though, to write a strong bylaw if you feel like we needed to defend against the tiny homes and the undersized lots. Michael tells me undersized lots, it's not as big a deal anyway. Because any, because in the 1950s, our bylaw only required 10,000.
So at the same time that you're encouraging this tiny homes and seasonal designation.
I'm not encouraging tiny homes. I don't care about tiny homes.
Telling us to write a strict, well, they go together though.
They don't. The municipal preference for, for your affordable housing strategy is only available if you're a seasonal community.
But tiny homes are allowed if you're a seasonal community. Am I, am I not?
You're required to write a bylaw to regulate, to allow tiny homes. So write a bylaw that does whatever you want. I don't care. I'm not advocating for tiny homes. I'm advocating for municipal workers.
But is there, when you say tiny homes are part of that agreement? Is it just like the cannabis where we wanted to write exceptionally strong language and size requirements on that, but we weren't allowed to because you need to have a reasonable path forward for a business to be here in town? So we couldn't say you can have 25 square feet on the third floor somewhere. You do that. Has to be a reasonable designation.
I believe the state requires you to do two bylaws if you accept the seasonal community. One is tiny homes and the other is undersized lots, right? But you can maintain your frontage, you can maintain your side setbacks, you can maintain your, your percent square footage, you know, ratio of square footage or, or, you know, footprint. You can do whatever you want and that's up to the planning board and I encourage.
So when Michael did up that sheet that he, that we sent around, take a look at that. And there's something, there's something, there's more, you know, he covered the tiny homes on that sheet. I just can't find it right.
The other thing is that the state is creating incentives.
Okay.
For seasonal communities. So financial incentive. They're saying if you want to like, you know, build municipal housing, they're going to have special grant programs that are available to people who adopt seasonal communities. There's also some talk now at DOT about recognizing that roads and bridges in towns like ours get 50 times the traffic based on the, the population. And somewhere like in a remote town in central Massachusetts, additional funding for roads and bridges. Money is going to be drying up with, you know, it's clear that the era of the, you know, Inflation Reduction Act is coming to an end. Money is going to be drying up, but it's just going to be tattering the town and availing ourselves of every source of revenue so that we can compete with other towns to get the types of grants for things like roads and bridges.
Okay, so here's the, I think we get the idea. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Here's the seasonal community designation. The Affordable Homes Act introduces the concept of seasonal community designation, which could affect Stockbridge's zoning if accepted. One, designation communities in Berkshire County with at least 40% seasonal housing units are automatically dedicate, designated as seasonal communities. Stockbridge by town meeting vote can either accept or decline this designation. Stockbridge by town meeting vote can either accept or decline this designation. Housing for municipal employees. Stockbridge could create a year round housing trust fund to provide affordable housing for municipal employees. This fund could be established independently, independently or with other towns, requiring the town to amend its bylaws to allow for this type of housing. Number three, tiny homes. Seasonal communities must adopt bylaws that allow for the construction of tiny homes for 100 square feet or less, excluding lots. Stockbridge's current bylaws do not address tiny homes, so the town would need to adopt provisions for them, particularly on undersized lots, while prohibiting their use as seasonal or short term rentals. And he talks about, uh, number four, attainable housing on undersized lots. The Affordable Homes Act requires seasonal communities to allow for attainable year round housing on undersized lots, provided they are not used for seasonal homes or short term rentals. Real estate tax exemption, seasonal communities may increase the real estate tax exemption for principal residence owners from 35% to 50%, shifting the tax burden from year round residents to owners of seasonal or higher valued homes. In summary, if accepted, the seasonal community designation could allow Stockbridge to develop year round housing for municipal employees and adopt tiny home regulations, but will also require updates to zone by law.
So as part of that requirement, would that mandate that second homeowners are taxed at a higher rate? It's at, it's at our discretion?
It's, it's, it's really past classification here.
And with the municipal designation for people that would fit into that category, is there a requirement somehow that they're here for a period of time?
They have to be employees of the, well, that's, that has to do with how you design the program as, so, you know. But I'll give you an example, like, you know, I saw a kid at, who works at Southern Berkshire Ambulance. Makes 40 grand a year as an EMT. We're about to spend, what, $7 million of your money to build the new fire station down by the transfer station. And that's going to include eight full time employees who are in the EMT range earning $40,000 to $50,000 a year. The net hits of the number one thing you could do to compete for those scarce EMT employees to fill those eight slots is to make inexpensive housing available to them. This isn't like kind of some pipe dream where an aging town, where, where all these things are related is my point. And I think that this question of municipal housing is going to become that much more important as we try to figure out how to keep everybody in this town safe.
It's unrealistic though, for that fire station to be $7 million. That's.
I don't know. It's $5 billion, $7 billion, whatever it is.
Oh, but it's, it's going to be like $50 million.
Make housing, make housing part of.
No, it's modular. Michael's already expected that. It's a modular building. We're plopping down. It has a price tag. You put it in, you hook up the water and sewer. It's got some bunk beds up top.
But there's, there's state regulations from the fire department that is going to cost more than that to put in there.
No, honestly, I've been, I've been involved this for years, like $7 million bucks. It's, it's basically a modular house that this company is selling. It's a modular fire station that comes in and, you know, they come, comes in and sections in a flatbed and they connect them all together. It's, uh, it's expensive, but with the employees and with the, uh, with the housing, it's about 1.2 million a year on the budget. I mean, it's, it's not cheap, but you know.
Make the housing right with the fire department.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. But then you got to have a way of preference.
What about the, the Glendale Fire Station and Interlaken Fire Stations? I thought those were a topic.
When we turn it into a candy store.
Think you need that.
Need to see those.
I do have a question about the housing trust fund. Is that something that has to build new housing or can it be used for money or for houses that are already existing?
Could be, any housing is housing. It doesn't matter if it's existing or.
So we don't have to build something with it. We just have to, okay.
It's the best discussion we've had in years.
Hey, anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Going to adjourn.
Do I have a second? On favor?
Can we talk about what we're going to do next time?
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Patrick, thank you.
Did that last time either.
So, um, I mean, the next, any, uh, let's see.
You want to talk about next time?
Yeah. So one thing that I wanted to ask you about. Yeah.
Temporary stay.
So let's see, we, our next meeting is on the 7th of January. And, um, the planning board can comment on, we've got two projects that are being discussed currently. One is DeSisto and the other is the Glendale Middle Road Project. And, um, they're both, you know, development projects and, um, is the board interested in, um, a site visit that's, DeSisto will go to the select board on the 16th of January, but the planning board can comment if we'd like. So there's, there's two options. One is that the planning board could comment as a board, and that's a little bit more difficult because we have to sit down and sort of agree on what we agree on and can put forward as, as a comment. Or the other option is that planning board members can just submit comments on their own. So.
Will, will the, uh, what is this meeting with the selectmen going to be with 37? Is this, is this an explanation time? Is this, what is this meeting officially?
On January 16th, that's when the special permit.
Is going to be a.
Will be heard, it'll be, well, they'll start the, hearing the special permit on the 16th of January at the select board. So, you know, if you look at the wording, the Cottage Era Estate, I think it's in there, um, planning board can comment. And for that, I would definitely, I mean, I would like a site visit anyway, you know, because I'd like to, I'm a fan of site visits. And Michael mentioned something about a select board site visit that's an open site board, open site visit so that we could attend.
When will that be?
I don't know.
Why don't we just use that as.
Okay, that's what I was going to suggest, but I just, you know. All right. So you're on board with the, uh, with a site visit at the same time as the select board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know when your site?
Oh, I'll get that from Michael. Wayne, I'll get that from Michael.
Site visit for DeSisto. Don't have one set.
Yeah, I'll get it from Michael. So, um, so do you want to start? Do you want to think, why don't you think about this? And, you know, let me know what you'd like to, how you'd like to approach it. Eric, you look like you have a question.
Just scratching his head. Yeah, accidentally put his hand up.
If I, if I had a question or what's rolling through my mind, you're a little embarrassing. What, what's happening with DeSisto now?
So they've, they submitted an application. It's on the town.
And it's about 300 inches long.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's on the town website. You can get a copy printed out here at the town hall from Teresa. And, um, the planning board can comment.
Just tell me that if you could, just tell me the general, what's, it's going to be a horse farm this time, a pig farm? What's it going to be?
Nope. It's scaled down.
It's going to be a candy store.
It's scaled down from the original. It's still something big.
It's a hotel.
Is it the same people?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a hotel.
But there's nothing built in the front so that you're just going to see DeSisto and then everything else is going to be to the side and back is my understanding. And there's lots there to see.
Oh, yeah.
So it's instead of, um, whereas previously, so the back section, there's like a wetland area. And whereas previously they were looking to cross that wetland area and then put a whole bunch of properties.
Yeah, that was years ago though, right?
No, two or three, something like, maybe four. I don't remember.
Maybe like six or seven.
Is it longer than that? Yeah. So, um, you know, now it's, it's more focused towards the front of the property.
Is it still horses?
Uh, no, it's a, there is, there is farming.
There's just farm, there are, oh, farm.
There's a garden.
Garden. And homes and a hotel.
Yeah. Well, you got to have your, your high end, you know, food to, food to farm to table, whatever. Restaurants. There's a hotel, I assume restaurant, oh, conference center.
Yep.
Conference center.
The old basketball court, yeah.
Yeah, residential. Um, there's a traffic study that you'll want to take a look at. So, uh, I have not looked at it yet. So I've just read the article in the paper, so I haven't gone through the actual what's posted on the website. So why don't, you know, why don't you think about, is everyone clear on what I'm talking about in terms of the two different approaches that we can take? Wayne, you?
I understand.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we'll just have to make sure we're clear on which way we want to go after we talk about it.
Yeah. So, you know, give that a little bit of thought and we don't have to decide that right now.
Would be better to do it after the site visit? So that we know what we're looking at?
I think it would be good to know, um, how we're going to proceed before we go on the site visit. You know, I think that.
You figure, I mean, you, you said yourself, the site visit's important. One thing I think you should do is go online and look at that plan.
Oh, yeah.
Do that and then you'll know more readily when, when we walk the property exactly what.
Yeah, certainly.
Definitely look at the plan before the site visit. And again, it is, um, it's long, it's over 300 pages. So you can get a printout here at the town hall. Yeah.
A lot of pages will fold out, triple size.
Yes, very tiny online. A lot going on here in town right now. So, and Eric and I are working on the LPOD by law. And, um, we'll come chat about that in the near future. And Michael and Donna will, will start in on updating the, um, uh, ADU by law. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Can you come on up please so people can? Thank you.
I saw on your agenda from a couple, a month or two ago where you talked about the master plan. Did you guys decide what you're doing on the master plan?
Well, I wanted some more information on that. And I understand that you're looking for federal funds or some funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Committee that requires a master plan. So I was interested to know more specifically about, um, what, what funds you're interested in that require an updated master plan. Because the reason I, I ask is, um, we, it wasn't that long ago that we did the diagnostic study. And the whole approach with the diagnostic report was at the time, we were considering a master plan. They're very expensive. And after talking to people, um, there's, you know, some idea that it's just, you know, something that sits on a shelf and do you really want to spend at the, when I first looked into it, which was in 2012, they were over $200,000. So I assume it's more now.
To do what?
To do a master plan. So when I spoke with the former head of regional planning, his recommendation was, um, rather than an easier approach would be to do the diagnostic study, which is what we ended up doing at zoning review. And so my question for Liz at the last meeting was, um, was twofold. One is, what are the, I understand that you're interested in funds that require a master plan and I'd be interested.
Can I address that?
Funds are, can I just finish please? And, um, and then the other thing was, um, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry?
I, I think that the only reason that, first of all, I don't think it's federal funds. I think that there's state funds around infrastructure that, uh, that are only available to communities with a master plan. In the case of Stockbridge, the only reason we would need that is if we're going to go for a three, four, $5 million grant to expand water and sewer to Glendale Middle Road because we want to put 60 units in. I don't sense there's any support to put a big giant development over there in that would require water and sewer. And so I don't see any need for us to necessarily write a master plan for the Affordable Housing Trust because unless we plan on doing a big giant development somewhere to the tune of a heating core, you know, we don't have any need for the state, the kind of state funding that would be multimillion dollar expand water and sewer to make it available to there. The reason why you have a master plan is because there's a number of other, like the Parks and Rec grants, there's a number of grants at the state level that tenor, as Michael points, if there's tenor.
Right. So that's, I just remembered. So my question for Liz.
I'm going to forget that.
Was, the question was why, could you please find out whether the diagnostic will cover that requirement with whatever they state, whatever the funds are, federal or state, whatever they are. You know, wherever this gold pot of money is for housing.
It's not about money for housing. It's about being able to compete for grants at a time where money's going to be getting a lot more tight.
So why don't you, my question is, can you find out whether the diagnostic report would suffice in terms of qualifying for that funding? Can you?
Some funding, I don't know what you're talking about with funding.
Grants.
Grants.
No, you need a master plan. You need to file a master plan with the state.
My question is, my question is, we have a master plan.
1996, it doesn't count.
Okay, but my question is, would the diagnostic report, which we did do.
It doesn't count.
Does that qualify? You know that for sure?
I know that for sure.
Okay.
And that wasn't the question I came back to ask. The simple question I came back to ask is there are state grants that will pay for master plans? And I want to ask your guys permission before I ask Michael to apply for those grants to see if we can get it for free. You know, BRPC can do an off the shelf master plan for a lot less than 200 grand. I think it's more like 40. But whatever, there's state grants that will pay for master plans and I don't want to unilaterally say, Michael, we should apply for that. I thought that the planning board should at least kind of let us know if we can get, if we get funding to do it. You know, we just need one on the shelf.
I think, you know, there's a lot going on right now, Patrick. And I'm going to ask you, I realize you have a lot of energy, but I'm going to ask you to pace, allow, allow for a slightly more steady.
Six months for a year. Okay. You don't just, I'm, I'm asking now because to get a grant to pay for this, you're talking about a project that would start at best next winter.
Okay.
I need more information. Let's put it on the agenda for next time. I do. I want to hear about it. I ask questions about it. And I feel we're going to go down a rabbit hole if I do, but I'd like to put that on if you can make it. I'd like to hear, yes, what he's asking about. Because I think there's other things involved other than just our, so if that's possible, that would be helpful.
I got it down. Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Think about, you know, what your questions are.
No, I'd be able to make it.
Can we pass?
I'll submit my.
Pass on it, Wayne.
We have a snowstorm.
Oh, don't say it.
You know, I mean, think of, you know, think about what's involved with the master plan and take a look at the, um, master plan from the 90s. I think it's posted on the town website. It was all, it was, it's involved. It's a lot of work.
On January 7th.
And, um, you know, I personally don't really just want sort of a perfunctory master plan off the shelf. I feel if we're going to do it, we should do it right. And, um, you know, I sort of, that's, that's my, my comment.
I agree with that. If a grant would do that, that would be great.
Yeah.
I just want to be able to get the grants so that we don't have to pay with our own little bucks dollars and we need a new road or bridge or whatever.
A master plan would be a really, you know, doing a master plan is a big deal. I'm not really convinced that, um, other than you're interested in the grant funding, that it's necessary, but you know, let's all think about it and have the conversation. Okay?
Gary.
Yeah.
I'm going to reintroduce. I made a motion, I re-motion to, uh, adjourn.
I re-ex.
Before we get into trouble.
Oh, in favor? Merry Christmas, everyone.